So I'm here in Brisbane city, in the square outside the city council buildings, which is right behind me. And you'll see this crowd of people, this crowd of townsfolk, who are gathered here for about thirty, forty minutes worth of speeches. Because what's happening inside those chambers, the Brisbane City Council is going to debate whether to declare climate change an emergency. This is an initiative that I have been a part of with a few of my rebel pals. And we're just about to get underway here now. So listen in, shall we? And hopefully the technology holds up and audio is loud enough. Check, 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 sound check. Nothing out of that one? Check, check, check. Yeah, there we go. Have you got a smartphone with you? Can you go on to Facebook on the Perium? And just let me know whether this, whether this, A, the audio is working? Doing a sound check here with my pal Andrew. Working? Yeah, apparently it's working. Good. Okay, great, we're live. So I'm live streaming. You want to tell us what you're doing here today?
Other than standing in the sun enjoying it, I'm here protesting to this council to acknowledge that there is a climate emergency and that Sydney and Melbourne and a host of other countries have already taken it on. And we're very recalcitrant and we are a long way behind. This is a fossil fuel state and we want to change that.
Excellent, yeah, great, thank you. Thank you, good work. So I'm live streaming to Perium. Do you want to tell us what you're doing here, young lady?
We're here to declare a climate crisis for the environment. And we try to put the people together and just like save, save the world, you know?
That sounds pretty good.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so I'm here with David Hurt, who's going to explain why he's here today. What are you doing here today, David?
I have two beautiful granddaughters, Clarissa and Cameron, living in Canberra. And I'm here and I do all my work on around climate emergency and the whole climate situation for them. Because they'll still be live at the end of this century. And I don't like what I see at the end of this century, the way we're heading with business as usual right now. The climate science is telling us that we're moving faster than ever before to a climate shutdown, a crisis that will actually see the extinction of most life on earth if we don't do something about it. And we're running out of time very fast. I'm active with Extinction Rebellion who recognise this. And for the first time in my life, I've become a rebel.
A rebel, with a cause this time.
With a cause, yeah.
A rebel with a cause. Thank you, David. So I'm live streaming. Would you tell me what you're doing here today?
I'm here because...
What's your name?
My name is Jo.
Jo, hello, Jo.
Hello.
Say hello to the world through Facebook.
Hello, world. We're here in Brisbane today because the house is on fire and it's time Brisbane City Council acted like it.
I'm going to just send me your sign. Brisbane City Council, show your green heart, declare a climate emergency. I love green hearts.
Thank you.
Excited about something.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is so good to see so many out here today. Give us a cheer if you're excited to see Brisbane City Council declare a climate emergency. Awesome. So before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land that we meet on today, the land of the Yagura and Terrible People. I would like to acknowledge that this land was never ceded. And I would also like to acknowledge that not only our indigenous community is disproportionately impacted by climate damage...
Hey buddy, can we ask you to shout somewhere else?
My name is Carrie. I'm with a group called Brisbane Climate Tears. And we've been doing some letter writing and other support activities, getting ready for this initiative tonight. It makes me absolutely thrilled to see so many of you out here today. And thank you all so much for coming to support the climate emergency declaration. I just want to start us off with a little bit of housekeeping. We want to make sure that we have a peaceful and respectful rally this afternoon. This is a family-friendly event. And I'm so thrilled that many of you guys brought your kids here today. That's wonderful. We can be loud, as I'm sure we will be, but we'll just try to maintain some respectful language as we get through the day. For those of you who brought along photos and things that you love, that you want to see protected from climate damage, there is going to be a media event at ten after one. So if you'd like to just head to the back of the crowd with your photos at that time, then we can make sure that you guys are shown in that press area. And again, that'll be at ten after one. So we're all here today to ask Brisbane City Council to declare a climate emergency. This means acknowledging the scale of the problem and the scale of the solutions to give ourselves and our kids the best chance at a livable and thriving planet. Climate emergency declarations at the city council level help to build momentum and support for strong action at the local level. Around the world, over 860 councils and other jurisdictions have declared climate emergencies, including Australian cities like Sydney, Melbourne and New South. Now it's Brisbane's turn to get on board. Climate justice needs to be at the heart of climate emergency declarations. So without further ado, I would like to welcome and thank Auntie Deb Sandy for welcoming us to country.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Jinga wala walu, gunam, mogwai, de jarada. We boka on behalf of the Chepewa people, welcome. So firstly, normally what I would do is just acknowledge my ancestors and acknowledge all the elders, past and present, and acknowledge each and every one of yous here today. What an emergency. It's a real big deal, eh? For those people here who don't acknowledge and recognise that there's a problem here going on in this country for our water, they need to have their eyes open. Yeah? They need to listen and shut their mouths. Yeah? They need, yeah? Those people who make their little too big comments, shut your mouth and come out and listen to the cause. Listen to the reason why the people are here doing this stuff. Yeah? Don't be too little bit in monitor and sit around and think that they have a right to talk about us people here, put people down. I've heard a few comments about like on today's paper, I haven't seen yet. You know, not true what people say. Here, this is a real issue here going on, water. Patty Mills, NBA basketballer, came home and he got married recently. Instead of going on his honeymoon, him and his wife, his wife stayed home. But Patty Mills, when our two Aboriginal communities and places within Australia now that don't have water. Talk about water emergency. This fellow here is paying for Aboriginal people to have their water trucked in. So don't tell me that's not a water emergency. The people up in Palm Island, they have dirty water. Some certain people in country, it's dirty, the water is dirty. Tell me that's not a water emergency? Yeah. You know, all those people with their comments, you know, the ones who are ignorant people, shut your mouth, people. Shut your mouth, because I'm sure those people wouldn't like their kids to be drinking dirty water or bathing in dirty water. Yeah? So all to all the people out there in Australia and the ones who comment about people here trying to do something for our country, not only for us humans, for our animals, for our ecosystem, for everything. Because without water, we all die. We all die, that's it, it's gone. So it's not only the people that are fracking and taking water and the ones here pumping it, mainland, the people out there too, offshore riggers, who are actually sucking the water too. So, you know, as far as you need to look onto those people too. Not only the people on the land. I heard here, there's a lot of people out there and that taking the water and draining the water offshore. So you know, it's time that everybody in Australia here starts to wake up. Maybe lay down your tools and stop working for a day to come out. Yeah? No to Adani, no to the mines, because without water, we all die. And then thirdly and lastly, just to conclude my thing, because we've got to cut it short here and that, yeah? I'd like to know where each and every one of yous all come from and your name. So tell me all yous' name and where your fellows come from on the count of three, please. One, two, three.
Brisbane, Guy.
Yeah, Jinga walo, we boka, welcome. And also I'd like to share one thing with yous in that. It's year for international language too. And we're trying to revise our language and that and get it back. So I'd like for all yous to just repeat this word after me. De bill.
De bill.
That's our water. Yay! Declaring emergency in Brisbane. Everybody in Australia, wake up! Wake up, everybody in Australia, wake up! And listen to the cause. And stop condemning people who are fighting for the cause. The water is for everybody and everybody needs to fight for it. Thank you. The water don't discriminate. Hey, water don't discriminate. If we don't have water, it'll take us all out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Auntie Deb. Just as a token of appreciation for Auntie Deb coming to speak with us today, we've got Connor here, he's going to go around and collect some donations. So if you guys have a gold coin or anything you'd like to donate, Connor will be walking around the crowd. So next up, I would like to introduce you all to Baya Khuwel. Baya's an indigenous leader of the Yagura people. And she's been engaged in raising awareness about the climate issue for some time. So let's give it all up for Baya.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to say a few things and just to come to support, or anything really to do with climate change and raising awareness is definitely, definitely an opportunity. Anytime to talk is good. But yeah, so I've just, I've been volunteering for our planet for a few years now, just raising awareness and about mankind, how they've just completely devastated our natural world to a point where we're now experiencing numerous mass extinctions. And I consider myself a very empathetic person. If I see something or someone that is struggling, I would literally give up any time of my day to help. And I've learnt that in different circumstances, a better word for poor health might be support. And there's different ways that we can help. It's something so simple as changing up the language or wording about how, when we're talking about something, it can change the whole perception of it. And we can refer to something completely, in a completely different way, that can make you, yeah, feel totally different about something. And when I first got involved in protesting and activism, it was originally for country, for my people and not just my traditional people, but for all our mo', because we're all connected. And just like our rivers and our waterways, that easily resemble the blood-life vessels of this whole land. And water is life and we are really running out of it very rapidly. Even worse, we're running out of time. Sorry, we have run out of time. I've never seen scientific research deny climate change. I've seen the absolute ignorance and neglect by humanity, which is something humanity's very good at. And when you look at Aboriginal people in their history and culture, the land had been completely sustained to a point where it was absolutely prestigious. And you can see in that just a different way of taking care of land and taking care of country. And I just, overall, declaring a climate emergency, it is extremely urgent. People need to wake up. I am a mother of three beautiful daughters. I have a wonderful family. And yeah, originally it's just started about my people, but now it's from a perspective as a parent. These school strikes, I know everybody knows about Adani, everybody might know about Origin and their plan to frack in Northern Territory. And as a mum, I think about those kids up there in Northern Territory. And not just my family, not just people that I know, but literally just everybody and those kids. And like Ani Dabbi was saying about drinking their water, you know? But that's different because Origin is literally lying about the fact that they're not going to contaminate their water. But yeah, we all need to stand together. Because like I said to Heidi, there was when I was in the event as well, that she, you know, climate change is going to affect all of us, no matter what colour we are, no matter where we come from, no matter how we talk. And we are literally making that happen like right now in our life. And I am literally scared for my children. I'm scared for, you know, that people are starting to say that it's unethical to bring children into this world now, because there's nothing new for them. And then I feel the anger towards the people from the previous decades that knew about climate change for so long, for years and years, but just was just worried about their time in that. And to me, it's just really, really selfish. And as a parent, that's a liberty that you cannot have. It's just, yeah. And I just came to support all yours. And thank you for everyone for coming out for this too, because yeah, we only got one world. And it's, you know, I don't know if you're religious or if you believe in anything like that, but the chances of us having this wonderful civilisation and all of us being here today was like a million to one. Like, and this is the only chance that we've got. After this, there's to be no more. And by then, no one's going to know who you are, what your name is, or ever remember you or anything that you did. How can they when they don't even have water to drink? And yeah, I suppose that's all I just wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Okay, guys, so I think it's time to let everybody who may be gathered around, wondering what we're doing here today, let them know why we're all here. So are you guys ready for a little bit of a chant? So this is going to be a call and respond. So I'll walk you through it first and then we can try it all together. So I'm going to say, what do we want? And you guys will say, climate justice. When I say, when do we want it? You guys say, now. And when I say, how are we going to get it? You guys say, fight for it. Ready? What do we want?
Climate justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Climate justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Climate justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
How are we going to get it?
Fight for it!
How are we going to get it?
Fight for it!
How are we going to get it?
Fight for it!
Awesome, thank you guys so much. Okay, so next I would like to welcome Heidi Edmonds. Heidi is the mother of two young girls. She has a PhD in environmental science and engineering. And she is also the co-founder of Australian Parents for Climate Action. She has co-led this climate emergency declaration for Brisbane. And she'll be speaking at City Hall today at two o'clock to council.
Thank you, Carrie. I just want to say such a massive thank you to everyone who's come out today and the many people who have helped with this campaign. No matter whether Brisbane City Council declares climate emergency or not today, this conversation is ongoing. And I'm just so encouraged by all the members of the community who have been supporting. So thank you, and this isn't everybody, but thank you to Long Future Foundation, Climate Tears, Keep Queensland Beautiful, Movement Against Destruction, Auntie Deb and Baya for speaking today. We'll hear from Guy and Sreen. And we'll hear from Greens Senator Jonathan Sree as well. And for everyone who's called or written a letter or talked to a friend about it, because we all need to talk about climate. That's what needs to keep happening. And climate emergency, those two words, to me, it's such a conversation starter. In two words, it tells me it's really urgent and it also tells me it's solvable. But a climate emergency plan doesn't just mean that we're talking about it, it also means we're taking action at the scale that's needed. We need to be investing in renewables. We need to be learning to use less stuff and share more in our economy. And we need to be using the technology that we've already got to stop burning fossil fuels and to protect our precious planet, which is our only home. I read an article last night where the Lord Mayor said that declaring a climate emergency was alarmist. Well, I look forward to speaking at council chambers at two o'clock to share that it's not alarmist. You need to have a good look at the summary of the IPCC report. Here we go. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, Global Warming of 1.5 degrees C, explains that collectively we need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030 to net zero by 2050 to have a reasonable chance, 50 to 66% chance of staying under 1.5 and giving our children and ourselves and our wonderful nature a chance. We have to work like our assignments due the next day. We have to work so very, very fast. It's been like the students who didn't do their homework and now they've got to crash the night before and get this planet saved. We are the bell. Let's all be the bells. I just wanted to share some personal stories, why I know that climate change is happening. I've got a picture here of my two beautiful daughters, Stella and Lucinda. Hopefully I won't cry. And they were my wake-up call. Soon after they were born, someone sent me a petition. So these guys, Stella and Lucinda. A petition asking me to sign a petition to declare climate emergency. And that petition woke me up. Climate change wasn't far off and unsolvable, it was urgent. And my children were my reason to find my agency to be the change. So I ask all of you and I ask our councillors to pay attention to their hearts. What will make you an agent of change, the change that we need? I grew up in Gladstone, central Queensland, and we didn't have air conditioning. My mum's here, she had it in her room, but I didn't have it in my room. Anyway, now we're in Brisbane. And last summer, my air conditioning didn't work for a week. I have to tell you, I was concerned for my health. I was concerned for my children's health. And we have a report now coming out. Sarah Chapman, a doctor from Brisbane, who's moved overseas now, but she has done a report saying that Brisbane could be unlivable due to hot days in summer and hot nights by 2050. What's not an emergency about that? It's already too hot. Exactly, Auntie Deb's right, it is happening now. And the people without enough money for air conditioning and the people certainly in Bangladesh and Mozambique are already feeling the impacts of climate. And that is climate justice right there. We've got the issue of people in vulnerable communities and we have our vulnerable children. The most precious, precious things in this world are our children and our nature that supports them. So I talked about the heat. It's winter and it feels like autumn, doesn't it, or spring, that's right. Almost summer. So what else matters to me? Well, I've just talked about the heat. Well, I think another one that's important to me is food. I wonder, as I open the fridge and I pick out strawberries and I pick out grapes for my daughters to eat, and I think, what will they be eating in decades to come? How do we protect their food? Because I tell you, when I can't have a bar of chocolate, you probably don't want to come and mess with me. So if we've got to eat strange things grown in factories, I'm not okay with that. I want my children to have healthy, diverse food, nature and ecosystems that support them. We know what we have to do. And Brisbane City Council, I do want to say, no matter what you decide to do today, I thank you for being a council who is doing a lot of good stuff on climate. You really are. They're a carbon neutral council, they are part of their city's powers partnership, and these are things to be commended. But that's not enough. Their emissions globally are still going up. They are still going up when they need to go down. And every voice that says that is not okay, that's a voice that leads to change. So let's all call on Brisbane City Council now. We're going to say Brisbane City, I'm going to say, we're going to say Brisbane City Council and then you repeat it. And then we're going to say, please declare, and you repeat it, okay? Let's try this. We might do it a couple of times, okay? Brisbane City Council!
Brisbane City Council!
Please declare!
Please declare!
Climate emergency!
Climate emergency!
That was magic. Now one more time. Brisbane City Council!
Brisbane City Council!
Please declare!
Please declare!
Climate emergency!
Climate emergency!
For the sake of my children, I hope that they will. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Heidi. And thank you for all of your incredibly hard work on bringing this motion to the floor in City Council today. In just a little while, Greens councillor Jonathan Sree will be presenting a climate emergency declaration motion to council. He's been fighting for climate justice. And he's been at all of these rallies and supporting all of these initiatives. So I'd like to invite Jonathan Sree up now to have a few words.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for coming out today. Thanks to Auntie Deb for the welcome to country. I want to acknowledge the elders of this place, pay respects to the rightful owners of this land and recognise that sovereignty was never ceded. We're gathered on stolen land. And when we're talking about the climate, when we're talking about the environment, we need to recognise that First Nations peoples, Pacifica peoples, people of colour in coastal communities around South East Asia are on the frontline in terms of vulnerability. They bear the brunt of catastrophic climate change. They are dealing first and foremost with the most severe impacts, even though they contributed virtually nothing to the issue to begin with. And that is the great injustice of this issue, which is that the people who are causing it don't have to bear the harshest consequences. But we also have to acknowledge that those First Nations peoples, that those Pacifica communities, they're the ones from whom we can learn. They have lived in balance with the world around them for thousands and thousands of generations. And when we talk about system change and climate justice, we need to be mindful that many of the solutions are already out there and it is from those communities that we should be learning from. I also just wanted to thank Heidi and all the organisers who brought us here together. As you know, I'm bringing that motion to council this afternoon. Heidi's going to speak just after two o'clock. They might not debate it until five or six PM, so I don't blame you if you don't stick around for it. But I wanted to make three simple points. The first is that climate change is very much a local issue. When we think about, we're in the middle of winter right now and this is how hot it is. But think about what our quality of life is going to be in this city in a few years to come. Think about how difficult it is going to be to have secure water and food supplies. Think about how difficult it's going to be just to hang out in the park on a hot summer's day. But above and beyond that, recognise that what happens around the world has a direct impact here at the local level. And when we think about how many people are being displaced by rising sea levels and catastrophic floods and droughts, when we recognise that climate change is predicted and quite likely to lead to hundreds of millions of climate refugees being displaced from their homes and seeking shelter, we can't, we can't put up the drawbridge, we can't close ourselves off to that. We can't pretend that that's not going to affect us here as well. And we need to recognise the moral duty that all of us carry to act and to act local as much as possible. And that's why I think this motion is so important, because it recognises that climate change is not something out there for other people to deal with. It's something that's going to impact us right here on the ground in Brisbane. And it's something that all of us need to take responsibility for. And I'm so excited and grateful that you're all here today. Yeah, the people of the Torres Strait Islands, exactly. The water is literally already lapping at the doorsteps. And it's interesting to reflect that this city council, they won't even turn off the screens so we can have a public meeting. They won't even give us access to PowerPoints. We have to run this stuff off batteries. That's how unsupportive they are of the urgency of addressing this crisis. And the second point I wanted to make follows on from that, which is that our political system has been completely hijacked and corrupted by big business. Completely hijacked. For decades now, the fossil fuel industry, big oil, all these big corporations have manipulated our political system, spreading false information, paying lobbyists to get into the ears of key political decision-makers, threatening them with scare campaigns and on-election campaigns if they dare to speak out, disciplining the political establishment so that even when they understand the facts, when they understand how serious this issue is, they do nothing. And we need to recognise that our system is no longer a healthy democracy. We lost that a long time ago. This is no longer a healthy democracy. And in that context, when our political system has been completely corrupted and hijacked by big business, when politicians are thinking more about themselves, thinking more about their mates in the corporate sector than about the long-term interests of society as a whole, the case for civil disobedience, the case for protest becomes so much stronger. We can no longer remain content and satisfied with expecting these political decision-makers to listen to us. We have to demand to be listened to. And of course, they're going to come after us. Of course, they're going to attack us. Of course, they're going to delegitimize us and criticise us and call us ferals and pests and whatever else they can think of, because they understand the threat we pose. They understand our collective power and they understand that when we stand up in large numbers and speak out, that carries power, that carries influence, and that's what they're most scared of. And they will try to beat us into submission. They will try to discredit us and delegitimize us and call us fringe extremists. But we're the ordinary people. We're the sane ones. We're not the extremists. They are the extremists. It is extreme and naive and reckless to think that we can keep living the way we are and that everything will be fine, that business as usual can just continue unabated and that it'll just fix itself. That is extreme. That is reckless. But that brings me to my last point, which is that taking action on climate change doesn't have to be a bad thing. And in fact, if we enable and support just transitions, if we support systems change that takes action on climate change, we can also have a better quality of life for all of us. And I want to share with you just that taste of a greener vision for Brisbane. Just imagine what it would be like if you weren't standing in the middle of the hot concrete square, but if there were a few more goddamn trees around. Imagine what it would be like if we had a public transport system that was cheap and reliable, God forbid free. Imagine free buses. Imagine what it would be like if we had a political establishment that actually cared about what's happening to us on the ground. Imagine if they were actually preparing ahead for rising sea levels, for the increase in threats of flooding. Imagine if we had a City Council that recognised we could all enjoy a high quality of life if we just taxed the big end of town, if we made these big mining corporations and these big property developers pay their fair share, there would be enough for everyone to have a great quality of life. And so they've saw it to divide us. They've told us that it's a choice between jobs and the environment. They've told us that we can't act on climate change or suddenly everyone's going to become poor and homeless. That's nonsense. And I have to say, from this City Council, it's particularly disgusting, because right now, there are 10,000 homeless people in this city and 30,000 empty apartments. What does that tell you about political priorities? But it doesn't have to be that way, because taking action on climate change, supporting climate justice, means that people get off the street. It means building sustainable homes so that everyone has a roof over their head. It means free university education, free dental. It means prioritising the rights of First Nations peoples. This is all connected. It's not one obscure issue off by itself. We need to rethink the very structure of our society and recognise that if we're a little less greedy and a little less selfish, we can all live a good life. So I know, I'm obviously feeling a bit cynical. I never really expected that the LNP would support this motion, but I want to remind you today that there is still a great deal of hope and optimism out there in the community. And I feel like the tide is turning. I know there's a, like this for a weekday, to be honest, this is quite a big rally. There are so many people out there who support this cause. There are so many people who are concerned about the lack of political action. And if we keep fighting, we will win. We will win. So as we head in there, just remember what it would be like if we had a political establishment that actually cared about what ordinary people think. And remember that we can have a city that is sustainable, democratic, beautiful, equitable. That is not naive or idealistic. That is pragmatic. We need to make that transition and we will make that transition, and it's up to all of us here to be part of it. Thank you so much for coming along today.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you so much for being a champion for climate. All right, so are you guys ready for another chant? Get moving a little bit. You can stand in for a while. This is what we're all going to do together. This one goes, "Act for future generations, pass the climate emergency declaration." So let's try that all together. Ready? Act for future generations, pass the climate emergency declaration. Act for future generations, pass the climate emergency declaration.
Act for future generations, pass the climate emergency declaration.
One more.
Act for future generations, pass the climate emergency declaration.
All right, that was all right. Okay, next up, I would like to welcome Serenity Wills. Do we have Serenity somewhere? Serenity is a youth climate leader and co-founder of Movement Against Destruction. They're a local group campaigning for climate justice and climate emergency actions. Welcome, Serenity.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for coming. This is a beautiful crowd today. So as you all know, today, the Brisbane City Council will hopefully be voting on this climate emergency declaration that we all know needs to be voted on and... No, let me take that back. It shouldn't even be voted on, it should be immediately passed, because we should be listening to the science. But unfortunately, some people out there don't like to listen to the science. That's why it's so important for us to be here, not only today, but at our actions as well, to raise our voices, to raise awareness, to raise awareness of the science that isn't getting out there, the media isn't covering it, and the government isn't informing the people as they rightly should. The other important thing about us all being here is that we are leading the fight, the people are leading the fight. And the best way for us to lead the fight is to unite together. So thank you all for coming and uniting together today. What else is there to say? I'm a little underprepared today. I would like to lead a chant that I don't believe has been covered today, and it's very important, because the mines that are being set up are taking away Aboriginal land without their permission. It's greedy. Yes, shame. It's taking away their land and it's taking away from future generations. So I would like to say, always was, always will be Aboriginal land.
Woo! Thank you very much. But those of you who don't know, this area here, once upon a time, it's like swampy lands. We actually, there was grass here, yeah? There were water fountains all the way down that there way and that. It was swampy lands. So you know, all that beautiful stuff that we speak of and that actually was here once, not long ago. So you see, now like Johnny said, here we're sitting in concrete jungle now, sweating our gorizat, you know, just while we're sitting here. But once upon a time, it wasn't always like this. Yeah, you could come in here and hang out, sit on the grass, let the kids run around, touch the water, keep cool. No more, no more now, yeah.
It's so sad what has been stolen from us and stolen from future generations. And it wouldn't be amazing if we could all unite together and bring back what we've lost. Sorry, Cass. How about another chant and then I might give the mic off? So I'll say, what do we want? And you'll say, climate justice. I'll say, when do we want it? And I'll say, now. And then I'll say, how are we going to get it? And you'll say, fight for it. So what do we want?
Climate justice.
When do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
Climate justice.
When do we want it?
Now.
How are we going to get it?
Fight for it.
How are we going to get it?
Fight for it.
Awesome, guys. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thanks, Serenity. Okay, and last but not least, I want to call on Guy Lane to come up and say a few words. Guy is an environmental scientist and the executive director of the Long Futures Foundation. He's also co-led the Brisbane Climate Emergency Declaration campaign. He has over 20 years' experience in climate change communication and advisory, and he's agreed to join us today with a passionate, science-based climate rave. So here we go.
Yes, I was going to write a speech, then I thought I'd just ramble on for a little while. So in my, I'm an environmental scientist, and in my 20 years of being involved in climate change, I want to just recount a couple of key dates that I've seen in the history and in my time. 1820 was the first science paper on climate change, not climate change per se, on the greenhouse effect. It was written by a guy called Jean Baptiste Fourier, French mathematician, and he called it the Bell Jar hypothesis. 1820, we've understood basic principles of how the climate operates, okay? 1896 was when the Swedish guy, Svante Arenas, calculated climate sensitivity. That's how much the planet warms if you increase the greenhouse gases, if you double the greenhouse gas. That was 1896, we knew those numbers, and the supercomputer models, climate models today are consistent with the numbers that he came up with, okay? Around about 1956 or so was when Charles Keeling started measuring, direct measurements of atmospheric greenhouse gas CO2, and that has generated a graph called the Keeling curve, which we can see today going up and up and up and up and up. And then around about 1985 was when the Exxon Mobil Corporation, some of their scientists, produced a graph that basically forward-projected the CO2 in the atmosphere against the average global temperatures. And if you actually went to that graph today and drew a line to 2019, you see, they got the science absolutely right around about the 1980s. Okay? So in 40 years, governments collectively have done nothing about climate change. Now, let me just put a little asterisk next to the word "nothing" and underneath in small print, it says, "They have done some things." There has been some programmes, they've planted a few trees, they've subsidised a bit of renewables. But if you actually look at the speed and the scope and the scale of the climate crisis, they have done nothing. And what I am seeing today from the news report yesterday night, saying that the mayor of this city has already decided that he won't be declaring a climate emergency. Now, I read that in a Murdoch newspaper, so who knows really actually what happened, right? Okay, so one of the things we were asked to do was to bring along a photograph of something that we treasure, that we fear will be lost under climate change. And many people have bought pictures of children. I don't have children, that I know of at least. But what I have got here is I have got a picture of the Tree of Life, the taxonomic Tree of Life. And this diagram basically shows the representation of all of the different types of organisms on this planet. There's something between 20 and 100 million different species. This is what the scientists tell us, and specifically, scientists have recently told me, because I've been doing some interviews with some leading scientists. They say that when the planet goes around one to two degrees above the pre-industrial baseline temperatures, it slips into the hothouse, where the temperatures zoom up to around about eight degrees, where it will extinguish most life on Earth. This climate change is not just about running out of strawberries, dying of heat stroke. This is about the annihilation of most of life on Earth. And the best analogy is that of the Permian extinction. 253 million years ago, a series of volcanic eruptions put lava over peat fields and coal fields, greenhouse gases rose in the air, the ocean acidified and went dead, and 90% of all the different animals and plants on the planet went extinct. That is what we are doing to this planet under climate change, and we're already one degree above baseline, we are in the danger zone. Climate change is an emergency, it is a crisis, and if this council refuses to say so, then they will be held accountable in the court of public opinion. That's all I had in mind to say. But I do like this chanting thing, okay? So I'm actually a bit of an introvert. So normally, I'd be writing a book or researching something, but it's in the last few months. It was actually the children's climate strike that got me. And I went to this event in the square here, two or three months ago. There were 10,000 children in the square and the public chanting and demanding climate action. And I realised that I'd spent most, of the last 20 years of my personal climate action have been a very lonely affair, but now I feel I've got lots and lots and lots of climate buddies. And I tell you what, standing for climate change, acting on climate change is the most fulfilling thing that I've ever done in my life. Very excited. Now, one of the chants that I really, really love, and I would ask that if you do this with me, just to make me feel really happy, right, is the one that goes, "Stop Adani, stop, stop Adani." Do we know that one? Okay, so can we all do that really loud? Because this is not just about Brisbane City Council, it's not just about Queensland, Australia, it's the whole planet, and Adani is a very, very important figurehead in this whole thing. So, "Stop Adani."
Stop, stop Adani.
"Stop Adani."
Stop, stop Adani.
"Stop Adani."
Stop, stop Adani.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, Guy. All right, guys, so I'm just aware of the time, so we're going to do one more chant before we wrap up. This is another call and respond. So I'm going to say, when our planet's under attack, what do we do? Stand up, fight back. Ready? When our planet's under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back.
When our planet's under attack, what do we do?
Stand up, fight back.
What do we do?
Stand up, fight back.
What do we do?
Stand up, fight back.
Thank you, all you fighters. You guys are climate heroes. All right, so thank you guys again for joining us today and supporting our movement to have Brisbane City Council declare a climate emergency. Give yourself a big round of applause. I'd like to also acknowledge Greenpeace is here with their contingent, and thank you guys for all your support with all of this. And also, Green State MP Michael Burkeman is in the audience, so let's give him a welcome today as well. Just a reminder, a few of the speakers that you saw here today will be presenting in City Council in just a few minutes. There's 30 seats available, so if any of you guys in the audience want to go, check that out. You're more than welcome to join in on that. Thirty of you, not all of you. I'd also like to mention the...
There's an overflow area.
There is an, oh, I've just been told there's an overflow area, so let's fill that up. Also, just as we talk about unity and building momentum, I just wanted to mention the school strike for climate. The global action is happening on September 20th, so hopefully some of you guys can make it to that. And for more information, you can go to globalclimatestrike.net.au. And thank you guys all again for coming. Give yourselves a big round of applause.
Thank you, that wraps up the proceedings. We have just had a media opportunity over there, but if there are any further media who wants to speak with us, we are here and will be here at the stage for the next few minutes, so come on up and have a chat. Just a big thank you to everyone for coming and everyone who made today possible. And he's hoping that Brisbane will declare climate emergency. And if not, we're going to keep this conversation going and going until it happens. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lana.
Lana, how you going?
And I've always, well, my husband died, he was a writer researcher, and he said...
Can I take a photo of your sign?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And he said, if 97% of the people...
Of the scientists, yeah.
Of the scientists.
Oh, that's a consensus amongst scientists.
I know, and people just won't agree. People are so ignorant. I tell them that all the time. I said, but if you're a surgeon, I never said you've all got heart problems, you listen. But for the science, no, and all the doubters and the Murdoch press and all this shit. I have a friend who's really intelligent, a writer. Hello, how are you? Nice to meet you. And all these young people that inspire us, who, you took your GAT year, she took her GAT year, Kylie did, to actually come and protest and stop Adani and everything. So this is the type of lovely people that we have. And I say, like you said, you shut away, this is the greatest tribe of people I've ever been mixed up with. The nicest tribe of nice people. This is young lady, want to talk to you?
Oh, yeah, but if you're still talking...
Oh, yeah, but if you're still talking.
No, no, I'm just introducing, that's all. And my friend-